Our mayor, every council member, everyone that sits in a leader's seat, God, we pray that you will bless them and all that's attached to them, God. We pray, God, that this meeting will go on without incident or accident, but that things will be discussed in a respectful and an honorable manner. We pray now, God, that all things will be done well and in the spirit of excellence. Lord, we love you on today and we thank you, we appreciate you, and we adore you. It is in Jesus' mattress name we pray, and we all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, we welcome you to the September twenty, twenty sixteen, city council meeting. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to combine all the appointments and reappointments into one motion, save time, effort, paper. Unless someone has a question about one of them.
So it would be R two through R eighteen, put all those in one order.
Looks like that goes all the way to R eighteen.
Yep, two through eighteen be one order.
We also have one additional amendment to the agenda, which is to add R thirty, which is maybe on your agenda in red. It's a resolution executing written notification to the Department of Revenue, the effective date of two percent food and beverage tax.
Move through with those changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have in. Consent agenda?
Move through, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to our routine agenda, item number one, order authorizing funding allocation of twenty-five thousand for the Bear Charitable Trust.
Move through.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A few weeks ago, I received a phone call from Mr. Archie McDonald and Pastor LaBaron Hedman in regards to a after-school program here in our city that serves our students from elementary school through middle school all the way through to high school. It's a program that has been in service for the last three years under a grant with Mississippi Department of Education, Mississippi Department of Edu- 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 had some clerical errors that they overpromised funds to a lot of programs in the state of Mississippi. In doing that, this great after-school program by the name of Camp Destiny was under loss of their funding. Received also a phone call from the CEO of Phil Harden communicating to me that they were going to help fill in the gap for this program on a one-time basis. When the funding, of course, resumes next year, the program will run as it's always run. Line of it is, this program, this after-school program in our community serves and it makes impact on a lot of children in the Meridian Public School District, serves close to one hundred children. After communicating to both Mr. McDonald and Pastor Hedman, thought that this program did not need to have any breaks in services, so we have a funding allocation for twenty-five thousand dollars through the Bear Charitable Trust to be a partner with Bear Charitable Trust, Phil Harden, for the Camp Destiny program to fill in the gap so that this program can continue. In the audience today, I do have Mr. Archie McDonald and Pastor Hedman, if you guys have any questions.
Council discussing in detail prior to the start of the meeting. As far as the contribution, and I remember meeting with Mr. McDonald, y'all could step up. Good evening.
Good evening.
Met with Mr. McDonald and Pastor Hedman last week. In regards to that allocation, if the allocation is provided, the council will move forward in providing it, or treating it as a contribution, like we've done several of our other contributions, for fear of setting a negative precedent that we don't want to follow. So, as far as giving the money, we will potentially give the money, if we do, it's going to come from legislative contributions in fiscal year twenty seventeen.
Can you clarify, what does that mean as it states the term?
Being the new budget October first.
You will be voting on that tonight?
Mm-hmm.
As far as the budget and I believe contributions is going to be coming up as well.
I'm gonna vote against this, I've already told you that. There are a lot of great childcare programs around this city, out of the state, some others do, some others don't. I told you, I told Mr. McDonald before, I guess he told you, I'm gonna vote against this.
We, we do respect every individual's right to express their opinion in the form of their vote, but I just would like to say to the city council that, repeating what the mayor said, this is a one-time, non-reoccurring donation. And we talk about a lot of the problems that we have in our community, and this is an opportunity for us to look outside of the processes and the rules and everything else that we have in place to do the right thing for these kids, because without this donation, Pastor Hedman's probably gonna have to shut the school down. And that means sending these kids back, you know, to the street where none of us want them to be, and so in, 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 in the view, that makes it different. And it's an opportunity for us to take the high road and do the right thing for the kids in our community. We, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and to speak on behalf of these children.
We thank you guys for your diligence and the hard work that you all do in the community. It takes a lot to, to do what you all do, and we certainly do appreciate it. We, if this does pass tonight, what we will do is readjust our contributions, and we'll be voting on it at our first council meeting in October. So, it'll come out of the twenty seventeen contributions, so that we can make sure that we get it done.
Give me a second. Mr. Whit, just to kind of clarify, because I, I see your face, we've, we currently obligated in contribution fiscal year seventeen about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of that two twenty-five that we've allocated. So we're gonna add, if it passes, we'll potentially remove twenty-five out of the remaining balance. So that's where it will show up in fiscal year seventeen's budget. Thank you.
If I come out, just gonna spray this budget. No, come out.
It's twenty seventeen.
But the money being transferred, this mayor already had in his budget. I don't have a problem with it. Whatever you don't do, I just wanna make sure.
Tonight is not a, a night to decide where the money is gonna come from, what we're doing isn't funding. So are there any other discussion about?
Fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Passes, thank you. Routine item two through eighteen, order confirming the appointments of and reappointments of several. Do you have a copy of the agenda, and in an effort to save time, do we have a motion?
Move. How many of these are new appointments?
Four.
I have three, three of the members here tonight, if you'd like to meet them.
I just need to know how many are new appointments?
Four.
If you have someone here that, that's, that we would like you to stand and...
Mr. Caldwell to the Housing Board of Adjust and Appeal, Mr. Parker to the Housing Board of Adjust and Appeal, and Mr. Lee Littrell to the Building Code Board of Adjust and Appeal. Three gentlemen, right here.
Thank you.
Thanks, God.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number nineteen, order authorizing acceptance of whole harmless agreement to remove fallen tree that is restricting creek flow.
Second.
As we have before, we come before the council to request permission to accept the whole harmless agreement on, on the work that's being done on a drainage situation.
City property, private property?
Because it's private property, that's where the whole harmless agreement comes in.
Why are we doing, making this exception?
And it's really not an exception, we've done this in the past, it's done in regards to ensure the welfare and safety of the public, I mean, the citizens and citizens' property.
It's a tree that has fallen in the creek that's obstructing the flow, or something? I think you all explained to us.
Right, and we've done this before, council, I brought this before you on several occasions in the past.
In your, in your, in your opinion, you recommend it to us because you feel it's a threat to health, safety, and welfare?
That's the whole purpose of doing this, yes. In order for us to enter to private property, we must have council approval.
That's a better answer.
The attorney, you agree?
Yes, it's a threat, danger to public, blocking the flow through here.
Well, well said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty, order authorizing the execution of location use agreement with Vanilla Palm Films.
Move through. Second.
President Houston, I have Director Parker here, he'll explain to you of what Vanilla Palm Films is wanting to do at Union Station and what capacity they'll be operating it. It says that the production company plans to use Union Station property during the month of October, they hadn't really lined up the exact dates, but they will be filming just a small segment of the movie at Union Station. Our attorney has looked over this, and he's okay with the contract.
Do you know what kind of movie it will be?
I wish I did, I really do.
Oh, he's here, okay, wonderful.
It's kind of a love story, but it's, it's unique in that it's really about the bond between a parent and a child. It's told in parallel from their two perspectives. The scene at Union Station is actually where the main character falls in love running for a train. Then they go across the street to the cafe, and fall in love.
Yes.
So what you're saying, it's a tearjerker?
It will be, yes. And this is the critical scene where they learn to like each other.
But it's good, good clean movie, that's what my concern.
It'll, it'll take us about three hours here realistically, and we don't ever actually go inside. Character comes out, and we're mainly gonna do it between the track and the door.
Any additional questions?
Did ask that the city develop a, some type of policy on use of city facilities for filming? We've had some route contracts filmed here on city street, we've had movies, we just need a standard policy, so when guys like this come forward, just give it to them and make it a lot simpler.
Do that with your attorney.
He may have more, he'll probably come back here too, won't do nothing.
That's right, I will.
That's good.
Good to see y'all.
We hope that you approve the falling in love.
Look, I covered you guys when, when we redid the station, and it's just beautiful, and it has to be.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number twenty-one, order authorizing memorandum of understanding for testing at Meridian Community College.
Move through, second.
President Houston, this is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that we've discussed in the past, this is an effort to streamline our testing and hiring procedures through civil service. Chief Clayton is here, he's been taking point on this project, and he can explain how exactly this is working.
Basically, we did our prior run with fire prevention, everything worked fine, we're got a little tweaking to do with the scoring system, and I'll get that before commission, but this basically is for you guys to okay us to do. This is the easiest way to go and modernize the system without reinventing the wheel. They've got all of the tests that we need, we basically did a assessment, reading comprehension, mechanical aptitude, working time, problem time, and distance, stuff like that, they have that on computer. And we're also set up to do the next firefighter entry test using their assessment, with a leaning heavily toward mechanical aptitude and reading comprehension and math, on the one that's coming up now. So, this modernizes our testing process, allows us to be able to do more without having to buy new laptops, computers, and get a workstation, everything else, just use it. And it also is a convenience to the public, because they can go and take the test when it's open, at their own convenience, they don't have to meet on a certain day, at a certain time, and then tell their boss that they're going, they're sick or whatever, they can just say, you know, I'm gonna do it on my lookout.
They don't do that, chief.
Are we gonna continue to buy the test, chief?
No, we're not, we're not gonna, I'm, I don't intend to purchase any more, copyright law.
As soon, since two years ago, we went through a lot of legal, it's now two years, surely they're up to date.
Doc, we can't update the test.
There you can.
Well, what I'm saying is, the copyright laws will allow you to give that, and every time we do it, we've gotta pay.
As I've told you several times, there are plenty of experts in this town and at our, what, seven state universities, they know how to make tests, they'd be glad to assist. I mean, we, two years ago, we sat here and went through all these legal proceedings, we had attorneys, and we said the tests weren't correct, I mean, that was the whole thing, we're gonna redo the test. Here we sit two years later.
The doc.
There's no reason to give a test to a secretary that requires her to compute the square footage in an office.
You can take that component out.
As I said, have we done that?
Yes.
Yeah, so all the tests are up to date.
To move forward with the testing procedures, we, we now have the ability for subject matter experts to take a look at the test, to pull out whatever is not relevant in the test, only on relevant material.
Subject matter.
These folks are from like the college, you're talking about?
Yes, MCC.
No, I'm talking about the experts you could reach, you're talking about.
You got two, two, two different topics going here, you got testing being facilitated by MCC, and then on the other side of it, you had the test that the city of Meridian has passed since the early nineteen seventy. In the past, these tests, you know, like Dr. Thomas just mentioned, you know, they are tremendously outdated, and the past didn't matter that they were outdated, that same test had to be given. So what we do have now, is the ability to go into that test, using a subject matter expert to say what is applicable to the days of our environment, located in the...
And the state doesn't have any of these updated tests?
You have to purchase these tests, and...
That wasn't my question.
...copyright laws, you cannot just buy that.
No, sir, that wasn't my question, they don't have updated either.
The state uses this same system which we're using.
Right, so they have not updated it, that's all I'm asking.
They use the same system that MCC is using, what are you asking?
Are they up, has the state updated any of the tests?
Yes, sir, they're updating regularly, yes, sir. It's an assessment. Now, fire prevent, basic assessment, we send all people off to all the schools, we just need them to be able to read, write, and be able to comprehend and do math. Everything else, we'll send them to the State Fire Academy, the National Fire Academy, same thing goes with public work, if they want to hire labor, main thing public works is focused on is their ability to read, write, and interpret stuff. Once they get on, use people will take them, train them, they gotta run a backhoe, then they'll do that, if they've got a fixed pipe, they'll send them off as far as the fixed hydrant and pipes and stuff like that, valves and whatever. This is a basic assessment test, and that's what we need to be testing for. Secretary, same thing.
I had, I had two questions. As far as funding, is no cost to the city, if there, if there is a cost that has to be incurred in the future, then y'all have to come back to us and revise it, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we will have to come back and ask you for funding, because right now, you're not approving funding, you're approving just to be able to utilize this facility to do this.
Definitely, that's why, that's why I said it was no cost, that's, that was my original premise. Second thing, under the works, 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 works...
Community College with respect to the memorandum of understanding, it says, I don't know, one, two, three, work with city and civil service commission secretary and examining board to obtain and develop testing materials that accurately and meaningfully test for the needed skills and knowledge base required to fill positions with the city.
So, I know you gave Mr. Hammond some, a little bit of clarification, but ju- just help me understand, how do you plan to, y'all talked about how you're gonna develop it, and who y'all are gonna use, how do you plan to obtain these materials?
That, that aptitude test would not be the same that would be given to a secretary as you would for a general laborer that works in public work. As a secretary, you would use a senior secretary here at the city of Meridian, that may have been here for twenty-five years, that can work with the people at MCC on developing tests that is relevant to that job. Now, you would not use that same senior secretary to help develop a test for a public work laborer, you would use someone that's been in public work for twenty-five or thirty years, or someone that knows that job. These tests are not the same test, you know, we're talking about as an aptitude test, this is that, the, the entry level. That, that's the, that's the answer that we have, and that's, that's...
Uh, what Richard was saying in a long way, we use the job description. In the announcement that states what qualifications are for this test, when they have the, the department head will have the job description, if they want to take it up there, sit down and say, look, the job description says this, this is what I want to test for, point blank.
Fair enough.
It's in the job description.
Any additional questions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-two, order accepting bid for demolition and abastis abatement of thirty structures.
Move through.
President Houston, as we continue to, to work on a demolition of houses, we continue to tear down structures, Mr. Parker is here to answer any questions that you may have related to any of these. We were just happy we got to do thirty structures for ninety-six thousand dollars.
When will they start, when will they finish?
I assume they will start within the next thirty days.
I'm assuming, don't we have an agreement with them to start? I mean, I've asked this at time, at time, at time on contracts, what's the start date, what's the stop?
I wish I could answer.
I do too.
Now, you can't have a start date for, for a vendor to begin work here in the city of Meridian without having completed a first, and there's no kind of contract holding someone's start date until you all...
Right, well, we can't prove it that we know when they're gonna start.
They're gonna start when they get the bid.
They may decide, well, it's getting rainy season, it's winter time, we'll start.
This is gonna be done before Christmas, right?
Yes, sir, I feel like, well, Delo and Mr. Logan on previous, he's done real good with it.
On, on the front of the bid form, it says they have, they have to finish the entire project within a hundred and twenty regular working days.
Different question, this is, this is the last one before we start doing it ourselves, correct?
That is correct.
When are we gonna start doing it ourselves?
Soon as public work gets the equipment.
That's in this? Gotcha, that's all in this budget.
Assuming the budget gets passed, you had six people in the budget to tear down houses, when will we start?
Well, you have to go through the testing process, and for, hosting the jobs, and interviewing the candidates, so...
So when will we start?
It starts, if that's taken anywhere from a month to a month and a half in the civil service process.
Spring?
No, I would say late winter, but possibly before. But also remember, we have to get houses as best, as best as a bay.
So when will we start that?
Start at October first.
Okay, that's good.
If you leave the money in my budget, there's...
All our budget, it's everybody's budget.
Well, I can't spend everybody's budget, but I can spend my budget.
Right.
It is good to see that we did have somebody from Meridian that actually wanted to be, we had two people from, two businesses from Meridian that bid on it, one from Casillasco, so it was good that Meridian finally were able to support our local people, so that's a good thing.
We'll have great experience working with this contract.
Good.
Any additional questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-three, authorization sale of blighted real property and approving amended memorandum of understanding, authorizing mayor to execute it and the quitclaim deed. That was a mouthful.
Move through.
This is what we talked about last year, this is the charter company doing this, and I'm gonna let the attorney answer the questions, because he has spoken to...
At, at the, I think it was two meetings ago now, you were... and, and the execution of the twenty-three...
You're in my, they can't hear you.
After that was submitted to the contractor, Mr. Chapman, Mr. Chapman raised an issue that even though he signed the memorandum of understanding, he requested that because of his lending requirements, the memorandum needed to say that, the reverter need to be clarified, so that it would not kick in if he began construction within two years, rather than he, I, I think he was wrong, but it's not gonna matter if, if that is your, your wishes, but it's just now, the only change is that the reverter won't kick in unless he does not begin construction within two years.
From today? From now?
From the time that the memorandum, the amended memorandum is signed.
Signed.
That was a, that was a reference to, to twenty-one seventeen one eleven, he said it was something similar to what Jackson had in that acquisition over there?
Yes, sir.
We've had other, other companies that ask about the same kind of thing, or, and churches and other, I had a call the other... I had a call the other day from a church that wanted to do the same thing, my property, we've done that before. Other than the ones we're giving, in this case, that we're giving them these properties, we giving them at a value or at no cost?
These are at no cost.
Okay, in the future, we've talked about this for about a year, we're going to, to try to do some of these at value?
Well, and to say no cost, I'm gonna go back and say, they paid a thousand dollars for some of the fees that we had on some of these sixteen lots?
Right.
Like we cut the grass, we sent the bill, they're reimbursing us for that.
That's what I was talking about, we are getting some...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
According to this contract, he pays a thousand dollars.
He's already tendered a thousand dollars.
And he decides when he wants to start?
Yes.
Like it might be twenty nineteen.
Yes, two years reverse back to the city of Meridian.
After he starts, is that what you...
Once he's signed.
Started within two years, if he has not started construction, then there's no, let's say he starts within two years and puts up one house. And he's still on the rest of his life.
Still here on the couch.
I mean, that's, that's...
Yeah, well, that, that is not the... He waits till last day in two years and puts up a finish, that's not...
That won't, that won't.
My opinion, that's not...
Okay, that's what I wanted you to say.
Other cities are all... It's a tough one to go, but you have to do, folks are willing to do.
The same statute that we just referenced also allows, I think, for that, that greatly reduced purchase price, because it's a blighted property in a blighted area.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Routine item number twenty-four, order accepting bid for solid waste collection.
Move through, second.
Counsel, this is the solid waste contract that we've discussed multiple times in work sessions and agenda-setting meetings, and we're bringing it before council for approval. I'm gonna let Odell answer any questions that you may have.
Rates going up how much from last year for the city?
The city in terms of what we pay the contractor, I think the, I shouldn't think, but in the The city, in terms of, of what we pay the contractor, uh, I think the, uh, I shouldn't think, but it, in the amount, about fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents, but for the consumer, the person out on the street, there'll be no income.
No income, what's over?
We're gonna pay, actually, with the people.